Call this meeting in order, and if you would follow me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. And we'll go on with item number three, any citizens desiring to be heard. All right, Jeffrey, well, we know what you're here for, not hearing anyone. We would like to go on to item number four, consideration possible action on approving minutes of March 15 at 18:26. We got that correction.
Yes, sir, I sent it right back out.
Thank you.
May we have pardon?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number five, discussion with Roberta Burns, the Pisces Garden Club, and possible action on approving installation of a flag and light on the courthouse annexed property location of the garden club monument. You're up, Roberta.
Well, we would like to put on a pole and flag, and we have the money to do it with, and we'd like to put it up with the one in the southwest corner.
So do I hear, what about the light? How will we power that?
We're gonna do solar.
Solar light, I see. Y'all would maintain the flags on the pole and...
Yeah, we would be responsible for that, yes.
For flying on a half-staff. And I guess my next question, what type of flag are we gonna put on the pole?
Do what?
What kind of flags are we gonna put on the pole?
Just one.
How large, what kind?
I'm thinking it's a fifteen-foot pole.
So it'd just be a US flag, just the US flag by itself, not up on the flight with it?
Right, that's what we want, since it's for the war veterans first and last. I mean, there's no ending to it as far as that monument.
I don't have a problem with it being the US flag myself. But as long as y'all's gonna maintain it, fly it a half-staff when it needs to be.
Then I'd like to make the motion that we accept this proposal. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Roberta.
Do you mind if I leave?
I do not mind if you leave. When do you think this'll happen?
Well, the flag pole is pretty much ready to go, and hopefully we'll try to get it in pretty soon. We'd like to have it as soon as possible.
Wonderful.
And especially with the holidays, or not holidays, but like 89ers coming and that, we'd like to have it in, and it comes from present, so you may know the gentleman that's doing it.
What's his name?
I don't know that, I never was told. Chuck Bercher knew the person, and so he worked with it, and I don't know the name, that he's providing the pole and so...
Awesome.
Good deal.
We try to make it the best we can make it, so...
Well, if y'all need some help digging the hole or something, call me, I'll come home all the time and help you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you for all you do.
Okay, and thank you all for helping us.
You bet, thank you. Moving on to item number six, consideration possible action approving resolution programming, STP UCA project, breaking coal train road project, AP 2508904 into three phases.
What's the advantage of three phases versus one due?
Well, as I go along, I'm learning this is my project, so as I go along learning this, we resubmitted this project for federal funding. And it's now at the point to where the federal piece that we need and federal funding exceeds the maximum amount we can request. So the road project, that project is around well over ten million dollars now for five miles. I mean, so where it, the advantage to breaking it into phases is we will be able to treat each one of those phases as a separate project as far as requesting funding, SERV funding and matching federal funds. And so we've got a better chance of getting one or more of those phases approved rather than the whole project at once. That's the reason it's been broken into different phases. So, and that was at the request and recommendation of ODOT and the engineers that we had, and also the folks at Central Oklahoma Government folks down there that process those.
So what phase would be first, I guess I should ask?
What we're looking at is starting from the north and working, but what we would do is we would spend all three phases for review every year for federal funds, and whichever one gets approved, right? So the other thing that you look at when you're requesting federal funds, there's only about seventeen or eighteen million dollars total each year that they have available for different projects. And since we're competing with Edmond and Oklahoma City and the various municipalities down there, it's not really a lot of money. And when you go in asking for over half of what is available every year, your chances of getting that allocated to you is not very good, especially with the points that we get from each one of those projects. What will happen is the north two miles will probably, because it has less grade changes in it, will probably come in with more points as far as being approved. And what we're looking at is just getting it started. Gosh, that was, last time this project was approved for federal funds is back in 2012. It immediately was, came off the list in 2013, and hasn't been applied for since. I mean, we applied for it this last year, and was disapproved. But this is what...
Not the way I remember it. Go ahead there, Marvin.
So anyway, this is what ODOT and ACOG recommended we do.
Okay, so you have that in an email or writing?
Yes, we do.
I'd like to see that, and really honestly, I'd like to visit with them. I'm wondering why we're not serving the most people first in the phase three?
I'm not sure it matters how many people as far as their points are concerned on how they grade those projects.
Well, I understand that, that the most people to be served would be in that first mile.
Well, I mean, again, I'm not sure that has anything to do with how they grade the projects.
It may not, but it may on the way of our priorities.
Well, this is, right now, this is my project on the SERV plan and the priority.
Well, I kinda like to amend that. That is county project, and you are the one who is overseeing this. We're all three of us county commissioners of the entire county.
Oh, absolutely, and I agree with that as well. And we're not gonna have...
Please, I'm still...
I thought I had the four.
I was responding, but I guess you don't want me to, so go for it.
Go for it. So I attended the ODOT County Advisory Board meeting yesterday morning. And the local government folks have announced that our SERV five-year plan update our money, how much money we'll be getting will be available to the CEDs on one June. And on one June, I recommend that we, after that, after we receive that, that we have our county SERV five-year plan, and then we can discuss all of those things that you wanna talk about tonight. But until then, I mean, if you wanna, you wanna take part of that project over to your side of the SERV plan, I got no problem with that. But it's something that we need to talk about as board on our SERV plan. Right now, what's before us is to break this into three pieces so we can get it funded.
I understand breaking it down to three different projects, I mean, that makes perfectly sense to me. But where we start, I mean, I guess, no, I don't know.
See, I'm not sure we get to choose where we start. Again, when you're applying for federal funds, it all depends on how it grades out.
So if we break this down to three different projects, you're gonna submit all three?
Yes, sir.
And whatever one scores the highest, that's where we wanna start?
The engineers are the ones, our engineers are the ones that fill out the scoring templates, fill out all that information, and that's what goes back on the application.
Where is our engineers? Where are they?
Who?
Engineers. So what engineering firm is filling this in?
And so...
And so...
Why aren't they here? Plus, I had an email from Shannon Shepherd requesting that they, that we all have a meeting together to discuss this. So do we not want to have that meeting and all of us discuss this as to the funding?
No, I think we absolutely wanna have that meeting, and I think we wanna have it after the first of June, when we have our update first of five-year plan so we can change the plan, update it for the next five years. And have our county plan put in place at that time is kinda when I was thinking we'd have our engineers in here and do that stuff.
Well, Shannon wanted to be here, where's she at?
He's at EPO at the conference. He can't be here today. So I think we oughta have a special meeting to discuss this, and I think we oughta have all parties involved in this, splitting it up into three phases. Because I'm not comfortable with this. This is not how it originally was done. This is not correct on what Commissioner Goodman is saying about it not being funded. It would've been carried over in January 15 of 15 if he had been at the meeting and made such a request, but he did not, and therefore at ACOG...
That's the first time I'm hearing that. You're a lying son of a bitch. Now, if you wanna bring that stuff out in these kinda meetings, I'm gonna call you out. Now, you were the one that was supposed to be representing us on that board, and if that was the way it was supposed to be, you didn't tell anybody about it until right now. Now, if you want that project, if you want that first mile on your SERV plan, I got no problem transferring it to you, but quit your damn lying.
Is that enough?
I'm not sure, is it?
I motion, I motion to table this till we can have a special meeting with all parties involved. And I'd like to have it as soon as possible, and I would like to have it, hopefully, by the end of the month of April.
Well, I'm certainly not gonna second that, and I move we approve separating this into three phases like we've asked, like we've been asked to do.
Just one clarifier, I do have a motion to table. Is there going to be a second? Motion dies, lack of second. Have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there going to be a second? Hearing none, motion dies, lack of second.
Now let's discuss it, I mean, we're supposed to be sitting up here at this table making good decisions for the people in the county.
Oh, I agree with that.
There seems to be a conflict over this project for some reason, I don't, I don't know. I don't know anything about this project besides it's been on the books for a long time. I, and I'm kinda stuck in the middle, I mean, whatever I vote, I guess, is gonna happen. Maybe we need to call a special meeting for the fifth of April, or whatever day it might be, and let's get everyone at the table, and let's make the right decision for the taxpayers of Logan County.
I wholly, heartily agree with that.
I mean, is it gonna kill you today, Marvin, if we don't bust us some free projects today?
If we don't get it put in three projects, we can't start the reengineering and separating it out. It's gonna delay things, and yes, it will, it'll cause us problems.
Not only that, it'll cost a lot more money, but that's okay, we got plenty. Moving on to...
I'm not the chair now, I sound like we're done.
All right, moving on to...
Can we not have a special meeting on the fifth? I mean, that's still pretty damn quick.
Yep, we can get...
Shannon Shepherd can't be here so bad, we'll do what we think.
Well, maybe give over here, or, you know, who is now over Dan Benny?
But frankly, that three projects so far makes the most sense to me, getting it funded.
I don't understand why it's a problem. Mike, the thing that, the thing that you want is to get the bottom end of that coal train project funded because that's over in your, the half of it's over in your district. You wanna show the folks that because you're running for office, that you're trying to do something for them out there. Right now is a hell of a time for you to be showing you wanna do something. We would've requested your help and probably appreciated it more last year when we were trying to get this funded again, but you didn't help do that. But you wanna delay it right now, I don't wanna delay it. I would rather break it into three pieces and talk about how we as a county get it all done.
So just so I get it clear in my mind, we got Waterley Road right here, and this is Coal Train.
Yes, sir.
How many miles of Coal Train are we serving?
Five.
We're gonna do five miles. So...
That first mile is over three million dollars right now.
Three million?
Then you got two miles, and two miles. Each one of those...
Wasn't this first mile funded through SERV?
No, it wasn't. It had SERV money on it, but it was never funded through, that first mile was never funded through federal funds because ODOT made them take it off, and that's why it came off the project in 2013, was because ODOT said it wasn't wide enough and needed to be three lanes, and so it had to be reengineered. That was never done until I got elected, picked the project back up, and resubmitted it. We resubmitted the whole five miles, it was over ten million dollars. The number of points that we lost right here, this, this first mile was gonna grade out somewhere around forty points. To get approved this last year, you had to have, I mean, it was gonna, it graded out less than thirty-two points. To get approved, you had to have greater than thirty-two points. Nothing, so our whole project was busted because of that first mile. And so what ODOT and what the other folks are saying, if we take and put it into three pieces, then we reapply all three of these at once, and they stand on their own merit.
Personally, I'd like to have a, at least have a chance to call ODOT myself. I mean, if not, have a meeting with them on the fifth.
Well, it's not, it's not really ODOT, right?
I kinda agree with that.
It's actually the folks, Holly and those folks up there that process that federal grant moment. They're the ones that are telling us how we need to do it, and they're the ones recommending we do it this way. Because it's the only way we're gonna get any of it funded.
Do you think we can have a meeting with them?
Well, see, that's the thing about, we, I don't have a problem having a meeting with Holly, but she, they need to come here if two or more county commissioners are gonna talk. What Shannon Shepherd wanted to do was to have a meeting with ODOT folks offsite somewhere, with Mike and I, they're together, and we can't do that. We can't do that as a set of commissioners.
Well, I guess if we, if we have a special meeting and Holly can't come up here, we can call for a special meeting to be there, can we not?
Yes.
We can have a meeting at a different location with enough notice.
Right.
No, there's no reason why we can't have it here, but that would be...
Well, I would personally like to talk to this Holly, myself, and then I know what I need to do for the taxpayers.
Exactly.
But until I have a chance to talk to her, I would feel better about not doing no action.
I almost would like to have Tim Gath here since he was in on the original project. Lacking that, we can't do that.
But hearing what you're saying, it makes more sense to me to break it up in three projects. I think you'll get it funded faster than what you will on one. But I was thinking that that first mile off of Waterley Road was funded through ACOG.
It was never... It was funded through SERV. It was supposed to be funded through SERV money. Please, I'm talking, at least let me talk. You've been talking and talking and talking and calling people names and everything else that you don't have a clue about. But that project was a Tim Gath, Shannon Shepherd, and Mark Sharpton came together, and that was a perfect mile road for SERV. And so let's have a discussion and redo our plan in June after we know what is gonna be happening with the SERV money that currently is going through the Senate as to how that is gonna be distributed to counties. So let's wait until June before we make that decision, as Commissioner Goodman suggests, till June after the session is over. And in the meantime, let's have everybody at the table to discuss what is the best option with SERV that we think we may have, as well as ACOG money, the STP money that has to be federally funded. So let's have that discussion this next month as soon as we possibly can, and then we'll make that final decision in June. But we may make that at this special meeting, I don't know. But we do not, at this time, know what the CIRB is gonna be doing because it is in flux. So can we move on to item eight? Oh, seven, I'm sorry.
I again would like to ask that we approve this action to break this into three phases, and then talk about which phase goes where during our SERV program.
And that's been done. Item seven, consideration...
Chairman?
Yes?
He made a motion.
Ah, okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'm not gonna say it till I'm busy with Holly.
No second, motion dies.
I'm not gonna second it.
Not today. Item seven, consideration possible action approving ODOT claim for Logan County Rural Water District One Utility Relocation Fees for Coal Train Road Project.
This is to send the reimbursement to Rural Water. The red is for the board, Marvin, each of the blue are for you.
Is that funded through the SERV money where you're paying on bank?
Yes.
ECU, I think. Is it ECU alone?
No, no, this, this is going to be ODOT SERV direct, straight to them, yes.
Yeah, straight from ODOT to them.
I guess I got a question. I've been working on Beaver Creek project. I got a water line that's gonna have to be moved. I think, end of the day, I think it's gonna cost me about two hundred thousand. Do y'all have any ideas how I can get that along with SERV money?
Beaver Creek, SERV.
It's signed here, yes.
We're paying for it through, or BR.
I'll keep this going.
Jeffrey, I know you got some information on it, spit it out to me, 'cause I'd really like that.
The only way is if you can get the CED five board to take it on. And you'd have to do an application to do that, 'cause right now that project was not originally started as a CIRB project, so it wasn't... It wasn't interviewed, it didn't go through the federal process.
So what I need to do to get an application for CED five?
I would talk to Carol about what process she's gonna require to get that absorbed to the CED, CIRB project. But that, that's the only way that, 'cause the fact is that it was never started as a CIRB project. It's gonna be hard. Not impossible. But if the board decides as a group that you can bring it on, then it should.
He's signing them right now, I don't have a motion on items. Monty just happened to ask Jeffrey a question.
I'll move that we approve.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye, motion carries on the item.
Answer your question, their money?
Yeah. Consideration possible...
I'll call her here in a minute.
Action on approving contract with RRY Services LLC for bridge replacement, CN number ten over Beaver Creek and District Number Three.
All right, this is, the bid was awarded, it's Monty's FEMA project. The contract has been to Lowell and approved. However, he hasn't signed it because there's another sheet that they're requesting that they need him to complete after both Railroad Yard and this board took action. So that's why he hasn't signed, but it has been to him, we have the bonds. So I just have these two, Railroad Yard has signed it. Once this board does that, I can be able to complete it.
I'd like to point out that RRY Services is a sister company to the Railroad Yard.
It is, and we did that when we did the bid.
Okay, so, I mean, 'cause when I made the motion on the bid, I said the Railroad Yard and actually it's a sister company of RRY.
Railroad Yard got the materials. RRY Services is the labor and the equipment, therefore they are the ones putting up the bonds.
I just want everyone to be clear on that.
Okay, all right.
But I'll move that we approve.
All in favor? Aye. All, motion is approved. Just looking, I guess, does Monty have to? I don't know. It just calls for one statement.
It's just set up for the chairman, and that's, that's just, yeah. I said it has been won.
All right, item nine, consideration possible action approving Interstate Forty crosstown beam, still being transferred for use on NBI 13802, located point east south by west of Orlando in District Number Three.
I gotta have a gentleman here sign off on it. You got one?
We got two.
This is for the bridge that we're gonna build.
Oh, okay.
I got the beams, the crosstown beams, you know, off Interstate Forty. I gotta do a transfer document.
Oh, yeah, and you got, they got like, they got serial numbers on them and everything that you got.
Now I gotta send CED five to approve, and... And we got a bunch of them if y'all need anything.
I see. We got a few in our yard too, thank you.
Two in the two that we are approved.
Did I need more than two?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Why you asking for Jeffrey?
Did you need a copy?
No, I don't, I just need to make sure that they hit to Carol from the board sign, and then get to Randy and...
Be done.
What? Dixon, yeah, you know, like Daryl.
Are you taking these, Jeffrey, or do I need to do it?
No, I can take them.
Are you sure you will?
You taking them today?
I can take them today, yeah.
I'll have them.
You get them here.
Well, we gotta get, Lowell has to sign them.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a ton of stuff that I've gotta get DAC measure on, so you're not getting it today.
No, then that's fine. Just let me know.
All right, on to item ten, consideration possible action approving an agreement with Mr. Rusty Bellford whereby Logan County District Three will purchase rock gravel from Mr. Bellford for forty dollars per ton, or per truckload. Forty dollars per truckload, that's a good price there, Monty.
I'll may we approve.
Second. All in favor? All she carries. Make three, this, we have plenty of copies. What do you have to sign there?
The next item?
Well, I'm one.
We're not there yet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
However, we need to, um, okay, wait, whoa.
Hold on, that's the. Where are we at?
This one?
Get quick and maybe you'll say.
Okay, you can't do this one.
Oh, this is a speed limit.
I know, let me have it.
'Cause I only, but the one I got only has one wrench on it.
Right, and that's the way it's supposed to be. I was gonna recommend we get into no action on that.
I have one.
Okay. Then that one would be right.
Okay.
Now, we're talking about what?
Eleven.
Item eleven, so, okay, that's, you continue. Okay, consideration possible action on approving resolution exposing an IR compact impact in sixty-one wrench for District Number Three.
All right, we have an impact wrench that was, the case of it blew up for some reason. I believe it disposed it. Wonder if that's a board. I'll move it approved.
Favor. Aye. Carries. All right. Item twelve, consideration possible action on approving resolution establishing the speed limit on C Road from Highway seventy-seven east to Pine Street at thirty-five miles per hour.
I'll move that we approve.
What's it at now? It's at forty-five at the present time.
What is that going towards?
A second.
From Pine to going back to the east, and that, is that forty-five also, or is that pretty?
I don't know. All county roads is forty-five unless posted otherwise.
Right, I haven't heard any complaints on there at all.
I don't have a lot of complaints on this one.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We got two, we got two of them, all right.
For item thirteen, consideration possible action on approving resolution donating a prisoner transport case and partition from the sheriff's office to the Tacoma Park Police Department.
I got one question. Why are we donating county property outside of the county? Is it nobody else that needs it or wants it, or have we looked? Has anybody asked? Is there anybody here to talk about that?
That would be the sheriff's office, and I don't know.
What, what is it?
It's a cage that goes in the back of a car. Barrier for the prisoner transport.
I, I mean, we've got police.
And partition.
Police in the county that, I mean, if we haven't checked with them first, I would wanna understand why we have it.
Someone who would want a prisoner transport cage. For someone who would want to have a prisoner transport cage.
For a department that needed it, apparently. I don't know the details.
I'm just wondering why we would transfer county property outside of the county without asking.
And I don't know that they didn't. I can't answer it.
I, I can't answer. We can table it.
Where the board wishes. Table? Make from the.
Table and ask Mr. Brown.
Get that or. I see if they can get over here real quick.
I don't think it's gonna kill the weapon, man. Kill the weapon, my man.
Yeah.
Hey.
All right, item fourteen, consideration possible action on approving resolution exposing that a nineteen eighty-five Dress Room Bulldozer Model fifteen fifty by sale at public auction.
You got twenty-three hundred?
Yes, sir. Twenty-three thousand.
I'll move it approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries approved, I guess. Does it, did it operate alright or?
It, it, well, the, uh, the back ripper piece, it had a big, it has a big hydraulic ram on the back of it. And the, uh, what the boys called the Jesus nut, that hold that ram together in there, kept, kept coming off of it. And then it stripped out. Our new mechanic took that ram off, had it re-threaded, put another nut on it, and, and, and got it to where it was running and working well. And that's the reason it brought twenty-three instead, twenty-three thousand instead of twenty-three hundred.
Yeah.
Okay. Item fifteen, consideration possible action on re-appointing Michael Pearson as the public sector representative to the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Item sixteen, consideration possible action on resolution appointing requisition authors for various accounts.
I have none for sixteen and seventeen.
That's fantastic. Item eighteen, consideration possible action on the consent agenda.
Pedro.
That much there? Hey, I kinda remember what I was gonna talk about under there. Their comments, announcements by the board. Can we go ahead and talk about it before I forget?
Yeah, I want to do that. Well, I can make a note for you. You kind of whizzed over here and talked about it already.
Really come, I'll come for you.
There, I'll say.
You win.
That's fine.
Money park.
I work for Logan County. I don't wanna be there.
You're correct.
I wonder if you put down one of them test spots with shingles?
Yes, I did, and I don't recommend it.
Is that right?
No, no. No, I would recommend them for, uh, put down right after, or right before you play down your tack cut, before you chip silverware.
Yeah.
That'd be, that all they'd be good for, still a new holes, while you're doing that. Not very deep holes with that. Now, they blow out, they're real good in a little of July when it's hot. But they get dusty, they blow around, and they wash out, just like a pothole.
Would, would that mean that we're not going to continue bidding?
I'm not ever gonna bid on it again. I'm not ever gonna.
We'll take it off for us. 'Cause I think we put that on six months.
Yes, ma'am, I think we did.
Saw that. Well, I hope they're okay with this. They won't be, they'll be impacted by this tractor supply coming in.
We'll have to give them a chance to catch up there.
You're already making a lot of.
What's this reimbursement considered telephone for? Four thousand?
It's a commission. From the telephones in the jail.
This is over a month period?
No, I believe that's quarterly.
Okay, still. It's over a thousand dollars a month we're making on prisoner calls? Seems a little excessive.
Alcoholic beverage, damn.
It's right at an even total of seven thousand dollars.
If we go up with the Sunday thing, when does that take effect?
It was effective immediately.
Immediately. Cool.
My phone right off the hook to clarify that.
I bet it is. Can't wait for it. Take them here to figure it out, though. Maybe not.
The election was on Tuesday, and they were able to start certain ones, I know.
Sign up for the Southland agreement on this.
That is it for consent.
I'll move it approved and consent agenda.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved. On to item eighteen, consideration possible action on approving claims for payment for March of twenty-sixteen.
The nineteenth.
We got to do a, the scouts got to go do a tour of that new Edmund jail facility before they ever opened it up.
I bet it was nice.
It was, and so when we were in the basement, the kids are in the jet, jail cells and everything, and they go, "What's that?" And it was the, the phone, the, the phone on the wall, like a payphone on the wall.
Oh, yeah, they ain't never seen one.
It's like, and so then the, the lady goes, you know, they go, well, how do they, there's no way to dial it. And there's ways to dial and stuff, but there's no coins. And it's like, well, it's a collect call. They charge nine dollars a minute. And it gets, it's what they charge to use a phone is nine bucks a minute.
Wow.
And they go, and they use it, and you can put up to, you can prepay or something like that, and it's like, you gotta be kidding. People actually pay nine bucks a minute? Yes, they did.
That's, but that's not right. I'm sorry, that's just not right.
But the funny part was the drunk so, where it was all the squishy floor and everything was, was, um, contoured toward the drain. Everything.
That's why ours is. The, the drain on the floor, you flush it.
But she said, don't, make sure you all, don't shut the door. Don't shut the door, 'cause we don't have the keys yet. I was just waiting for one of the kids to do it.
Close the door.
The biggest kid of all that knew it, huh?
Well, no, I was, I was just trying to make sure I made a clear route of way.
You should tell them, so y'all make sure you close the door, then they left them open.
But that was a, an amazing. But that was an amazing facility.
A zero dollar P F.
I'll have to look.
I'm just curious how, how.
They all are committed to memory.
I'm just trying to understand why would anyone ever do a zero dollar P F.
Um, actually, I think that that is a, Laura missed the number when she put that in there. If you'll look, Marvin. There was, with the computer on the unit, the total's down here is eighty. So I'll have to go back in and look at why I didn't carry it to here, 'cause it is down here is eighty.
Oh, okay, I, I was just.
Yeah, I, I see. I didn't notice, and she must not have either.
Sorry.
But the total here is eighty.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
I'll make the motion approved.
Second. All in favor? Aye, motion carries. Any decision desiring to be heard? Not hearing anything, anybody, add down the twenty-one, comments, announcements, questions by the board of county commissioners.
I got a couple of things. One, on, on the lease agreements, have y'all read over them on the graders we currently have?
I have, yes, sir.
Do you read it that we have them graders for three years or five thousand years, whichever comes first?
That's the way I understand it, yes, sir.
So after five thousand years, we can turn them back in?
Yes, actually, I, actually, in the lease agreement, the way I read it, it's a. Yes, actually, I, actually, in the lease agreement, the way I read it says that within thirty days' notice, you can turn them back in.
Immediately.
Yes, sir.
Another thing I have is I was visiting with Kingfisher County, we're trying to come up with an agreement on fixing the county line. Anyway, we got to talking about road crossing permits. In Monday's meeting in Kingfisher County, they approved seventy-nine thousand dollars in road crossing permits. Also, that got us talking about the fees and what have you. They charge fifteen hundred dollars for a road crossing permit if they kept the road, if they bored, they charge a thousand, then on water lines, they charge two fifty a mile. We charge three hundred dollars straight across the board. And the way we came up with three hundred dollars is the law says we can charge what we feel that it costs us, you know, the administration cost, the labor we got involved. Well, now hindsight looking back, I'm gonna have to go around and start rolling up mile after mile of water lines that I don't know who they belong to. So, do y'all feel that we could raise our permanent fees and is that something we're interested in doing?
Maybe on water lines, but.
Something to think about.
How do you justify that kind of money on, on road crossing fees? Because that sounds more like a tax.
I, I agree, I mean, but I know on these water lines, I got several miles of poly pipe laying out there that we can't mow.
And I have some as well.
We can't clean the bar ditch.
And take the bar ditch and, and we're gonna have to roll it up, yeah.
So just, I just wanted to throw that out there, what Kingfisher County is.
I think it's something we should put on the agenda to talk about officially.
But I, I agree on our permanent road crossing, you know, I just don't know how they justify that much money, but.
I don't, I don't see how they possibly.
But I can tell you on these water lines, it's gonna be a mess going around cleaning all of it up now that they're all gone.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Making their trash basically.
Road grader and road crossings.
Uh, any other questions?
On the, uh, on the road graders, uh, on the, on the warranty issues?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I checked into that as well and they weren't wanting to warranty the whole grader, just the paratrain, I think, or whatever it was. And that's, that's not good, but, you know, I was looking at what those things cost us a month and then what a new one will cost us a month on lease purchases and it, they're about twice, it's gonna be about twice as much now.
I got all that information right here.
Yes, sir.
I forgot one, read over it. But you're right.
Yeah, it's about twice as, twice what we're paying down.
To go with the standard warranty for paratrain and hydraulics is forty-nine, or four thousand ninety bucks for, for one year. And to buy a new one, or John Deere gave me a price. I'll move it to that page. I think it was sixteen hundred. Sixteen hundred a month per grader.
But if you.
Send it to be a blue note at the end if you.
That's the blue note, you know, for a couple hundred grand or something.
If you wanted to keep it, which, same way on the cat, if you wanna keep the cat, you're gonna have a blue note too.
Yeah, the blue note on those cats is like a hundred and sixty-two or a hundred and sixty-five, somewhere around there.
Yeah, what was it on the John Deere?
A blue note. It's a.
A blue and one at two.
On the end of it. I was thinking it was well over two. And of course, I can't do anything because we're in election here. Can't buy ourselves.
That last one, that last on that amortization, last payment.
Two hundred and twenty-four.
Is that what it was? So.
So anyway, yeah.
There you are.
I don't, I don't know what I'll do. I mean, warranty, hydraulics and, and paratrain is big, but I mean, I, I need full machine warranty, so I got another call in team. See what I'm gonna do.
Yeah, they just completely redid a circle on one of ours.
But I don't think I can give them four thousand dollars for hydraulics and paratrain for twelve months. I think I'll try to agree with you. Anyway, we'll see what they can do.
All right. So I've got a, uh, ACOG meeting this afternoon, I'll chat with Paulie Nasty and see what we can get a meeting put together up there at ACOG.
And where we need to do.
I had one thing, uh, I sent the director.
Flood zone. Flood zone.
Yeah, uh, stormwater, stormwater.
Stormwater.
Agenda out yesterday with a question to you all, when the stormwater people from the U, the Q folks were here, y'all took no action and said, hold it off till the first of April, so, Monday's the first of April. I've not heard anything from her or that anything has transpired, so I did not know what you wanted me to do with that as an agenda item for Monday, hold off, what am I doing?
So my remembrance of that was that they showed up and said, you guys are now responsible to manage stormwater in South Logan County.
In those areas.
In those areas. And by the way, you need to have a plan put together. No, by the way, here's, here's a plan we put together for you, all you gotta do is sign it and if you don't sign it, it's a ten thousand dollars a day fine for not doing it. And so I don't think we got a lot of choice in that area and I think that's why we delayed it, so people could have a chance to read, um, if I remember right, read that document that they gave to us and said that we needed to adopt that they provided for us.
Well, I think there was also the issue of how do we implement it?
Right, and there wasn't, if I remember, they didn't have, what's the requirements? And they didn't, they couldn't tell us what we are.
We used.
The enforcement piece of it is what we, yeah.
Yeah, well, and how do we know with, with us not having planning zoning permitting and things like that, we have no idea who's building what to know what, what needs checked to, to be done type thing anyway, and that, that presents another part of that problem. I just didn't know whether to put it on or do you wanna bump it till like the fifteenth and kinda see what we put together? I don't, I just didn't know what to do with the item. I haven't heard any more from, from the show.
Come back with a plan that'll work.
Well, they, they want us to please it and collect money for them and it sounds a little shady to me.
Yes, very shady. Very shady.
Yeah, and then you turn around and get a grant from them to pay for the burner and pay for their permits and makes a whole lot of sense.
Okay.
I think it's so unclear.
Put it on the agenda, I guess.
Yeah.
You want it on for the fourth for Monday?
I don't want it on the.
Well, you wanna go the fifteenth?
But we gotta, I think we have to or we're gonna be fined, but I mean, that's our options. We gotta do something. We need to talk about it officially, we'll take it.
Do you want her back here?
That's not my call.
I think she'll come back.
Ask me.
Well, what I'm, what I'm. What I'm saying is I have not had any communication with her. If I put her on for Monday, I don't know that that's a type to fit her schedule. If I go the fifteenth, I can, you know, you see where I'm going?
Well, so why don't you give her a call and see when she can make it and that's when we'll put it back on.
Okay. Thank you.
If that'll work for you.
For me?
I, I assume they're gonna force us into doing that. But if you're on twenty-two, I'll move it with adjourned.
A second. All in favor of your.